The council meeting for Monday, April twenty-second. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Walton? Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, and now I am looking for approval of agenda as submitted, or if there's changes that need to be made. Councilman Weiss?
I would like to move correspondence, NISA ad hoc committee correspondence, move that to an action item under item E.
All right.
I second.
All right. Any other changes that need to be made or brought to the front? Okay. All right, so we have that request to move that up to action item E, so we can take that as his motion. All right, can you? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we have time for audience participation? Nope, we do a roll, yeah, sorry.
No, we go through the agenda.
Oh, through the agenda, okay. So now, looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the action item.
Aye.
Support.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, time for audience participation. Looks like we're pretty handy out there, so we'll just move right along then. Proclamation for Frank Joseph Ingardio. We had a request from Earl Wolf for a proclamation for Joseph Frank Ingardio, who will be turning one hundred on June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. So if, before you leave this evening, if all council members could go ahead and sign this, and we will make sure that it gets... I'm not sure exactly when they're having their celebration yet, but...
It's going to be his birthday's in June.
June, so...
Because I was there when they actually requested this. I gave it to Earl because he gave it to Jean.
Okay.
To me because she did a story on him, so... Yeah, I talked to his daughter-in-law, like, that if anybody wants to know what he's done for the city, I've got the whole... Yeah, you've got that, too.
Yep, yep. So take the time this evening to get this signed, and then we will make sure that it gets in the proper hands. Is it going to be at a senior center in March, or are you doing something special?
No, there's... He lives, I think he lives in Florida now. But I wanted to get this out. I talked to her about last month or two, and, you know, he's ninety-nine years old.
Sure.
I don't know if it's going to draft it, or something before we put it together.
All right, well, then we'll make sure we get it to him once we get it signed, so... All right, I'll make sure that that gets around to everybody. We have council meeting minutes from April eighth that we need to approve, if there's no changes.
Make a motion to approve the council minute. Meeting minutes from April eighth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, how were the accounts payable?
Well, we didn't have too many bills to pay. It was only a total of fifty thousand, one hundred and nine twenty-six.
All right.
And I'd like to make a motion to pay checks seven-one-six-five-seven through seven-one-seven-oh-five in a total amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Sure. All right. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Weis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
All right. Moving right along, it looks like we have a couple action items. The first is the FOIA forms updated, so I believe this is just replacing older FOIA forms with new FOIA forms. Does anybody have any questions regarding these? Yes, Holly?
They're pretty much the same as our last ones. We just had to make some tweaks
Okay.
to them, because there were some laws passed last year.
All right.
To make sure we're up to date.
Great, thank you very much. So with that, I'll hold for motion. Yes, Tim?
I just wanted to add that these recent amendments to the FOIA statute are actually more in favor of the public body
Sure.
than the other way around.
Okay, all right. On the average, how many FOIA requests do we get in a calendar year?
Oh, I'd say about two to three a week.
Two to three a week, okay, all right.
Right.
And you, and just for the viewing audience, you handle those pretty much internally, unless it's something that would need to come for council's specific attention? Okay, all right. So we do keep our office staff busy, then. Any questions for Holly, or for Attorney Corum regarding these FOIA forms? I mean, it seems pretty simple, we're making an update.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated FOIA forms. Do we need to do that, or?
Yeah, yeah, there you go, perfect.
Second.
All right, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have the first reading of the monthly utility billing ordinance amendment, and I again can't thank Rachel and Ann for doing the hard work on this, getting us to this point. For the viewing audience out there as well, this is to move from the bi-monthly billing cycle to a monthly billing cycle for our water and sewer utilities, to hopefully balance it out more for our community residents and business owners, because a majority of utility bills are a monthly basis, so hopefully this will help out in that fashion. Does anybody have any questions regarding this first reading?
I have a question for Cory. Have we received any phone calls at all from anybody seeing this on YouTube or the previous meeting at all?
Are you not receiving any questions, Cory? Okay.
I had one question. It was the section where we were talking about expansion of the water and sewer system to someone that's currently not on it in the ninety-day timeline. Everywhere else in here, the majority of other places, when we're dealing with a resident or one-up, we detail out exactly who will be paying for what. And I think in that section, it just says that they, you know, that they'll be connected, but it doesn't say where the cost lies. And I didn't know, I'm assuming the cost lies with the residents being hooked up, but I didn't know if that had to be spelled out, or if it's...
If you look right here, building and sewer connections, the cost and expenses of all installation, connection, maintenance into the building, sewer shall be done, borne by the owner.
Okay.
Sorry, I just jumped out.
Oh, you're right. The section I was... That covers it, but...
Are you talking about?
I was talking about in one-seventy-one-B.
Okay. Oh, it's right below, it's right below, right here.
So I just missed it, because I was reading through it where it was bullet pointed.
Or by the owner, okay.
So that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, man, I... Rachel did a really good job, because if you just read her here, you don't see that much.
All right, well, now that that's cleared up, yes, Tim?
I would also just like to add that there's pending legislation
Okay.
before the state legislature, in which, in my view, they would want to micromanage the municipal water and sewer system billing process.
Okay.
And at least one of the provisions is that they're going to mandate monthly billing.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're kind of ahead of the...
That part.
Ahead of that, okay.
They're also going to proposing to prohibit penalties, so...
Okay.
Among other things, I think it's overreaching, and it probably won't go anywhere if the Michigan Municipal League gets involved.
Sure.
I'm just letting you know that...
And that's why they're there to kind of watch out for us municipalities. So we can get this in place, and then if something were to come down from the legislature that they want to strike penalties, then we would amend it again, correct?
Right, but at least then you would have the monthly billing process in place already.
Excellent, all right, thank you, Tim, that's great information. Any other questions for this, or somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the first reading of the monthly billing, or monthly utility billing ordinance amendment.
Okay.
Support.
All right, Holly? Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Moving right along, at a nice little speed here, we have the MDOT contract resolution, and this is for the remainder of the Middle Street project, and then also taking care of South Mullet. Any questions regarding this?
Well, I raised some questions with Cory, he's had it earlier, but if you could explain what it was different in pricing between that and ours.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. So I'll just bring your attention, the cover memo references a total cost of seven-oh-seven-four-hundred for the project, but if you look on page nine-C, page twelve, there's an item called force account work, utility pole relocation,
which is one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine-oh-two. Okay.
So in this case, the contract takes precedent over what it opened at. That specific item is separated, and I would defer to Scott to maybe just give us a brief explanation of why.
I'll keep it as brief as possible. There is a utility pole that needs to be relocated. It could qualify as part of the project, that's the fundable part of the project. The only thing is, that would only happen if we don't meet the full eighty percent, twenty percent part of it. So by putting it in here, it gives the opportunity, once the bids come in, if the contract underperforms or the prices are less, you could then qualify this for some grant funding.
Okay.
If not, the city still has to pay this amount.
Okay.
It might also delay the contract too much by doing this, so we may also pull the plug on it and not run it through the MDOT contract anyways.
Yep.
But it gives us the ability to do it if you guys approve it this way.
Okay. All right, and it doesn't look like we have a dollar amount in the actual requested action, so we don't have to amend or anything. We can just follow this requested action that you wrote out so nicely for us.
Tim, I guess I would default to you as to what your opinion is on approval of a contract.
Well, it's your standard MDOT contract, and the amounts are what they are in there. Unless you want to renegotiate the amounts, you're pretty much set with what you got.
Okay.
You want the seven-oh-seven-four-hundred?
Well, the resolution is a form resolution from MDOT, and they just referenced the contract, so...
Yeah.
The contract is made separate to the resolution.
Is that attached to the contract, though? The form resolution?
Yep, so you'll have, your resolution authorizes the execution of the contract, which is attached.
Okay.
Great.
This is a contract that is done by unit pricing.
Yep.
So the unit prices are established by the bids, and then if you put in one hundred feet of a pipe, and it's so many dollars per foot of that pipe, then that's what you pay. If you put in ninety feet of that pipe, then it's paid less.
Yeah.
Or if you put in one hundred and ten, it's adjusted up, okay?
Okay.
Scott, do you have any idea when this will start?
It will happen during the summer. I won't know a schedule until after the bids. Bids are coming in on May third, and then MDOT will set up a construction meeting with the contractor, then we get the schedule. So it'll probably be towards the end of May that we actually find out a hard schedule.
Okay. Great question, we'll be standing. All right, looking for a motion to move this forward.
All right.
I make a motion to approve resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Michigan Department of Transportation contract number nineteen-dash-five-one-four-nine and associated project authorizations with MDOT.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? No? All right, Holly? Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Scott and Cory, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Noah, for bringing that question forward. All right, next we have, looking for a motion for our public hearing for our budget for nineteen-twenty.
I'd like to make a motion to set our public hearing for nineteen-slash-twenty-twenty fiscal year budget for May thirteenth, twenty-nineteen, at seven-oh-five PM.
Aye.
Holly? Paul?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
All right, we have our additional action item E, which was moved up from correspondence, and that would be the NISA ad hoc committee correspondence, and getting our ad hoc committee rolling. So I did have a couple council members contact me. We had discussion regarding the letter that we received from NISA for fire code ad hoc committee. I myself am a little confused by this, because we did have Director Yance come to us wanting to get this to move forward. So then the discussion of an ad hoc committee for Williamston and any surrounding municipalities that might want to be involved, establishing the fire code and inspection schedule within the city of Williamston, and then the authority to perform inspections. And now, we've got this letter here that's saying that NISA would rather be the committee, their board committee, instead of us forming... We've already formed our ad hoc committee, so I'd like to open this up for a little bit of discussion, and then see where this, you know, moves as far as action.
I guess...
No, that's okay.
My thought was, you know, Chief Yance approached us last fall about this, and there wasn't, when he approached us, there wasn't really much of a framework. And we had a, I think it was on the council agenda at least twice, and we had a special meeting, and more and more questions kept coming up, and there weren't, there were some answers, but there weren't a lot of answers. And my feeling is, if they wanted to do it fully internally, why didn't they do it fully internally before they came to us? And we had city staff and councilmen then putting resources into it, and now they want to pull it back and do it internally.
Great, I would one hundred percent agree. We've invested time and discussion into this, and I think that we need to be a part of it, because it affects our city residents, specifically downtown and industrial, commercial businesses. So I definitely would like to see us at least get this ad hoc committee going, see what direction it takes. Other comments from council members regarding this?
I don't even see it in their minutes, but that was even discussed.
Okay.
I agree with Councilman Ryan's. I think we spent three months on this, talking about this. I think we need to move forward and take action.
Okay.
And appoint some dates for the ad hoc committee, identify who's on the ad hoc committee, and move forward.
Great. Cory, that would really kind of fall, I believe, either on you or one of the staff members to at least get the ad hoc committee that we identified with the addition of the Wheatfield Township member, and let's at least get an initial meeting scheduled so we can have that discussion. Certainly, you know, if Director Yance has more information he'd like to bring to us at that time, I do see that, you know, their next board meeting is May ninth, and they invited us to attend that.
I think it'd be a good thing if people attended the meeting. I know it's tough with everybody on other boards and stuff like that, your schedules, but, I mean, sometimes I think it's a forgotten thing.
Cory, did you have any other information or anything else to add to this letter that came?
I didn't, I thought it was important to share, because it was... I sent it on behalf of council to try to get some other folks interested. And at the last meeting, we shared that we just had the one response from Wheatfield Township. I did not set a meeting that week. Chief was at a conference down outstate. But I did meet with him today about this and a couple other things, so we were sharing schedules to get a meeting date set.
Okay.
So I would say our members can look forward to that this week.
Tim?
There's potential issues with having the entire NISA board serve as a city advisory board. Although, if they meet, they should comply with the Open Meetings Act in all particulars, and it would potentially be considered a meeting of the NISA board, but if they're meeting exclusively in the kind of text of the city's ad hoc board, well, then they would be purely advisory and wouldn't necessarily have to comply with open meetings. But it gets confusing as to how you tell the difference.
Okay, right, okay, thank you.
Can we just review who's identified to be on the committee at this time?
Yes, so when we established the committee, yourself, Councilman Bizzard, and, I believe, Noah.
Was the backup.
Yep, was the backup. And then we have the representative from Wheatfield.
Yeah, Barb.
Barb, yeah.
How do you say her last name?
I don't, I can't pronounce it.
All right, Barb from Wheatfield. So, you know what, was that in our last?
It was right here in the list.
Oh, Bitigar.
Bitigar.
Bitigar, I think I was, I actually was able to pronounce it last time. So let's go ahead and get that moving forward. So I guess I would, I'm looking for a motion then for the ad hoc committee to get a meeting schedule established.
I'll make a motion, and maybe council could help me out with the wording, to form the ad hoc committee?
We've already formed it, to...
To set dates.
To direct the city manager to establish a date for a meeting.
Well said, thank you for the summary, man.
Sorry.
So don't get in trouble, I'll support it on this one.
Very good.
And then, the one thing that I would like to see us happen, would like to see happen at that initial meeting, for anybody that's ever been on an ad hoc committee, is you need to have a purpose and goal. So we'll want to establish that, or clarify that, at that ad hoc committee. Because as we all know, it's a committee that can serve up to two years, no more than two years, at that end of that timeframe. Or if we, you know, establish this and get done, we report out on it, and if we don't get things taken care of within two years, the mayor can reappoint that ad hoc committee for an additional one year. All right, Holly? Walton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Weis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council members, for getting through that action items list. We do not have any discussion items for the evening. The correspondence that we did receive, which was the NISA minutes from April eleventh, and the ad hoc committee correspondence, we've...
We didn't have, Mike wasn't there at the last meeting.
Okay.
He was out of town, so you get a pretty thorough bunch of minutes, because Holly took them, and she does a great job.
Well, Councilman Walton, is there anything that you would like to add?
We didn't have, because it was a really quiet meeting, because Rusty had laryngitis, and...
Okay.
So it was quiet.
Okay.
So was Paula doing the minutes again?
No, she was filling in for her regular...
Okay, all right.
But she does a great job.
I know, it's too bad she's not doing it.
This is pretty thorough, I mean, it is, it's four pages long, so hopefully everybody had an opportunity to read through it. And for the viewing committee or community out there, Councilman Walton is our NISA rep, and Councilman Weiss is our alternate. So they do attend those meetings. Moving right along, then, department head reports. Cory, thank you so much for your report. Anything you'd like to add?
I just want to bring attention to the fact that we have a meeting scheduled with MDOT this week regarding the concerns of the intersection that were expressed at the last meeting.
Great.
So they were eager to get with us, having heard about some of the refreshed concerns out there. So Chief Young, Scott, myself will be meeting with them on Wednesday morning. Hope we have a really good meeting, learn a little bit more from their perspective, because our understanding is that they have done some analysis of the road diet concept and some of the things with the intersection. So I think it's going to be a really good first meeting to keep moving this forward.
You have to keep pushing, and now it took like ten years or more to get that light down by the post office.
Oh, it's similar.
And they were like saying, well, you have, so many deaths have to be involved. I mean, that was their theory.
Yeah.
And it was, it was terrible. I mean, they were having accidents down there all the time. MDOT's not really easy to work with.
Well, let's hope that our dynamic trio here will be able to influence them to help us out with that intersection situation.
And with that being said, I know there's been accidents and stuff from my time when I was on NISA. We responded to calls that happened at the intersection. They are sporadic, but there are more near misses than there are accidents. But at what point do you call a near miss not an accident when it comes down to it? So, I mean, I know it's more work for you guys, but keeping the pressure on definitely helps.
It's encouraging that they're meeting with us, because I know you guys kind of have been picking away at it, and so I'm encouraged. Scott, you know, a couple months ago, we had some citizens that had asked why the MDOT sandbags and signage and stuff was still out on Grand River during the wintertime and stuff. Is that stuff still curbside?
I saw that there was something on north end of town, and I haven't investigated that yet.
Okay, just, I guess it would be nice to know as well, what can we expect this summer construction season? Because I know whatever they were supposed to do did not get done. That's why they left all their signage there in hopes that they would get a break in the weather to do something.
Well, they were impacted by the labor dispute last year.
Yes, the labor disputes, too.
And that labor dispute has moved forward. I believe that, last I knew, there was a ratification of the contract. So I think everything's good to go, or positive.
But I think there was some unfinished work, so I guess I'm wondering, is that going to affect us this summer?
I'm not sure how it impacted the completion of the ninety-six and the ramps and stuff like that, so...
All right, okay, maybe ask on Wednesday. All right, Police Chief report. Chief, what do you got for us?
I do have a report. I wanted to report back. Some time ago, we talked at council about the break-ins and destruction at the Ice House and the destruction of property at the restrooms in McCormick Park. Want to let you know we've apprehended four young men at professions. They are the same ones who, more than once, broke into the Ice House, did destruction, and also did the destruction to the bathrooms in McCormick Park that caused them to be closed for some time to the public this winter. And so they will be going to court, we are requesting restitution and community service, and my intent is to have them clean the bathrooms that they destroyed. And so I just want to encourage the public that we have zero tolerance for destruction of property, particularly tax paid property. And so if you see something, say something, get ahold of us. And on the opposite end of that, this afternoon, I was out on the bike, it was wonderful, the park was just alive, the town was alive, with people of all ages, young and old, and it was nice, and the bathrooms are open. So I just want to report back.
Chief, with that being said, I know national night out's coming up faster than we think, but what about that being a positive? And wants to have them possibly assist with the operations and the workings of that.
It's possible, but...
Bring a positive note out of what you guys do.
Yep, and that's a possibility as well, just, you need to know that justice is very slow. It may not be through the process by that time, but that's a consideration.
All right, well, Chief, thank you very much, and thank you for being diligent in taking care of this, and I mean...
It wasn't me, it was the officers, they did, in conjunction with DPW, and so it was a team effort, and so, and they put a lot of work into it, and so...
Do we know a dollar amount of destruction for the ice house and the restrooms?
We do, I just will not get into all the details in a couple days, you know?
Okay, not yet, all right, not a problem at all?
What would be the, what would be the problem, and I know it's expensive, because you only see those cameras, you know? Have you seen this person, some of them are pretty clear, some of them you couldn't tell if you walked up to them. Why couldn't we have something, I mean, those bathrooms are destroyed a lot over the years. Why, you know, why, what would be the, think about putting up cameras, I mean...
At staff level, we have a number of discussions continually trying to do, and I want to rest on the success we had here.
Okay.
And so, but we, but Sandy, we do consider a lot of different options.
All right, well, it's always good information to have, and thank you so much, Chief, and thank you to everybody that was a part of getting this taken care of. And keep us updated with how the court date goes and the outcomes. All right, subcommittee, committee reports, so raise your hand if you've been to one of your board meetings, please, and if you'd like to give a report out.
Okay, I came with the tail end of the downtown development.
Yes, thank you for filling in, Cory, I appreciate it.
I don't have a whole lot, but a lot was discussed about parking lot project, I know, future parking lots, we talked about the interchange between Grand River and Pluton, you know, so things seem to be moving very well there. It was a weird night, a short meeting for me, because I got there late, unfortunately, but yeah.
And my absence was due to the fact that in my other life at Lansing Community College, we're coming to the semester end, and I was on call to have to go assist a faculty. So I didn't want to be disrespectful to the DDA board and have to leave mid-meeting, so I do appreciate you making it to that meeting. Parks and Rec, have you guys had a meeting?
Well, we had a nice meeting this morning, as a matter of fact.
All right.
Very nice meeting about the park.
Okay.
At...
Volunteers, okay, volunteers, all right.
That's almost two of us, so. Those, those guys get a, need to get a lot of credit, they, they do a lot, you know, they'll always come begging for stuff, they go out and raise a money. So anyway, that's really come along well, I don't know, it's time to go into details, but it's really going well.
Keep us posted, all right. Sandy, you kind of mentioned that it was a quiet NISA board meeting, so whenever there's something good that you need to share with us, please, let us know.
They put me on as a head of personnel committee, so. I was at the meeting, and they let me do it, they, they didn't let me on the other one, when they made me co-whatever I am.
Okay, all right. Anybody else?
Mr. Bizer, did we have a plan to issue, we just recently... Not since our last city council meeting, but in the upcoming one, I believe, we're going to revisit objective, correct?
Yeah, CrossFit.
All right, great.
We had two jam-packed sightings, Tifa 2A, Tifa 2B.
Yes.
And the EC of Thursday, 18th, pretty much just set dates for the volunteer and procedural stuff.
Yeah, that board doesn't meet a whole lot unless there's an actual project going on.
That is a fact.
In those districts, so you're on a good board. And ZBA has not had to meet either, correct?
We have not since the McDonald's, but we do have a meeting for next month, Barb just set a meeting date this morning.
All right, excellent, well, then we will look forward to your report after that, then. All right, then we will just keep moving right along, audience participation, there's nobody out there, but, you know, feel free, these are open to the public. We do publish them on our city webpage and our Facebook page, so these are open meetings. I will go around now with council member comments, Mr. Hall?
Nothing.
Mr. Bellinger?
Nothing, Tennessee.
Ms. Walton?
Nothing.
Bizer?
Yeah, I'd like to speak a little bit about the NISA stuff, I really think that's something that the citizens aren't aware of, that NISA is, we have a representative from the city that attends, represents the city, and the public is welcome to those meetings, and there's very, very little public participation in those meetings, and it could be beneficial to NISA, and it'd also inform me about what the NISA services do for our community, so.
Great, thank you. Yes, Mr. Ryanes?
You'll come?
All right, Mr. Weiss?
Just, I want to thank Cory and staff, you know, we come to council meetings on the 7th, 4th, Monday of the month. Cory attends every one of these city meetings in the evening, so it takes time away from his family as well as staff, so I appreciate their, and Chief and DPW for the same.
It was a beautiful day out, I think it hit high 70s, so spring is definitely here. With that being said, we do have the city service of branch and limb pickup, make sure that they are facing the correct direction, that all of your branches are facing the correct, or same direction, so it's easier for our DPW staff when they're loading them into the chipper. If you have any questions regarding any of those services, please check our website or give our city offices a call. All of our meetings are posted on our city website, the schedules are there, and they are all open to the public. We do appreciate public input with what is happening in the city. We don't take that very lightly when we have citizen concerns. So we will always do our best to be transparent and keep everybody informed. And you will be able to see this meeting on our Facebook page, once it's loaded up off of YouTube, which I think is great. So hopefully, there's a lot of people watching. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn.